This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We are going to call to order a little bit late this evening. Welcome to a regular session of the East Hampton School Committee. This is a public meeting. At the close of this regular session, we will be moving into an executive session and recessing or journeying for the evening from there. We are going to start tonight. We're going to roll call in Ben.
And Hersi here.
Megan.
Megan Harvey here.
Laura Scott present, Linda.
Demar Kay here.
And Sam.
Sam Hunter here.
Um, are we ready with correspondence?
Yes, because I don't have it. There was. Oh. There is, there is. Okay. This is new in the moment. It's like an unboxing video. So that's how you know I have little kids. We have a lovely thank you note to report from Mackenzie McCarthy, who is thanking us for allowing us, for allowing her to speak and update us on things that are going on at the schools for the past two years. And we really owe her so many thanks. And while we're doing that, we can also thank Piper, since she's right here in the room with us, who is amazing.
Do we have any gifts?
I don't have any gifts in my room, do I?
Great. So next up is Piper. Do we know how our slideshow? Piper worked diligently on a slide presentation.
Yes, isn't my.
And us olds are having trouble getting the tab.
Now it's not going back, okay.
I might have it. So.
What?
You have it?
Go on, go on. Go ahead.
Okay. In science, we're making cars that are powered by rubber bands, which is actually fun. And in math, well, we had a quiz today, but we're simplifying expressions. In civics, we're doing the judicial branch. And in ELA, we're doing the Hunger Games. In art, we finished making our paper mache masks. In music, we, well, I wrote this a few days ago. We were watching a movie, but we did like a movie soundtrack bracket. And for art class, Ghostbusters won.
Nice.
Nice.
Gym.
Good choice.
Last week, we walked around the track and did volleyball. I have gym tomorrow. In steam, we're doing an egg drop where we make like a parachute or something. My group did not break theirs. We were one of two only groups that didn't break.
It's harder than it seems. How high, do you know, Piper? How high were they dropping it?
Do you know the middle school staircase?
No kidding.
It's off of that.
All right.
We made like a little tiny box, put the egg in it, put cotton balls around it, and then made a small parachute, and it didn't break. It landed right up.
Fantastic.
And then health, well, our teacher wasn't there on Friday, so we had a sub. And I don't know what we're really doing, but we were doing nutrition stuff.
Nice.
Today, eighth grade ELA classes had the 2018 East Hampton poet laureate Gary Metris come in, and he read us poetry and taught us some other stuff that we didn't learn in ELA. Oh, and also he's my grandpa.
Oh, no kidding?
Also.
He came in in third grade, too, and it was fun.
Nice.
I had pictures of me with him when I was a little kid.
I'm still looking for it. I'm going to put them up if it's the last thing I do.
To the Ghostbusters soundtrack.
That I cannot promise.
Tomorrow, we have Step Up Day, where we go to the high school for half the day, and we follow a schedule. And yeah. It's Spirit Week, so Monday was incognito Monday, where you wore like sunglasses or hat. Today was 2000's Day. Tomorrow is Class Colors Day, because it makes it easier for Step Up Day. So we're all in a group. And our grade has pink, which I'm really happy about. Thursday is Bahamas Beach Day, but it's like school appropriate beach wear. Friday is Kindergarten Day, and I'm looking forward to that.
Nice.
Everyone does like kindergartners?
Yes, I'm pulling out the pigtails.
Yes.
Great.
Overalls, I don't know, what would you do? I mean, grand animals.
Yeah. Grand animals.
Next Monday, we have our semi-formal dance. It's in the middle school cafeteria, and we're getting like a buffet dessert.
It's super, it is dinner and dancing, y'all.
That's awesome.
There is a taco bar.
Yep.
And what was the dessert? It was like a sundae bar or something, right?
It said on the flyer, I think it was ice cream sundaes, and there's also churros.
That's where I make my jokes.
I know. We're just going to crash the dance.
Pretty fancy one.
Next Monday, which is kind of inconvenient, we also have Field Day on the same day as the dance.
Oh, wow.
Oh.
Yeah. I think, well, last year, we had like tug of war against homerooms. My homeroom won. Frisbee, and then a bunch of other activities. And then there's lunch and snacks, too. School is out in a week and two days, but for eighth grade. I didn't put graduation on here. But for eighth grade, we graduate next Tuesday.
Tuesday night? Tuesday night at seven, everybody.
Seven?
Get tickets so they know how many seats they need.
Four tickets.
Yeah.
That's so great.
And then I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to do this, and thank you to all the people that I've met this year. And yeah, goodbye, middle school.
And guess what? It literally just opened.
The presentation just opened?
It just opened.
Share it so that.
I'm going to share it.
Share it.
Just like speed run through.
Anybody, Ben, you want to, we're going to go around the table and just share some thoughts about Piper's presentation?
I mean, I've been, I'm so happy that you've come here. And I mean, I always want to know what it's like from a student's perspective, like at the school. And I feel like you've done such a great job opening a window for us to see kind of what kids are doing. And keep, keep being public with it, you know? Keep talking about school, keep, keep bringing it up, because we need to know what you're doing.
Definitely raise public speaking confidence.
Yes. Hundred percent, hundred percent.
You're so poised. You present like a senior in high school, not an eighth grader. Megan, do you have any?
I, I can't do two things at once, so I will say some.
Yeah, we're going to, Megan's going to finish. Maureen, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I think it was a great idea that the school committee had brought up, saying, could we have somebody from Mountain View come also and speak? Because you got to know what's going on in the high school, but there's a lot of kids, right, preschool to grade eight there. And so it was important to know, like, what is happening there also? So you gave us a view of what's happening in a really nice way, a nice personal way. And I think that everybody, you know, not only just us, but also the viewers, were very appreciative that you came with your report. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I think it's just really nice each time to see it from a student. I think it reminds all of us, it certainly does for me, why we're here, why we wanted to be here, you know? Because it really is ultimately about the students and this community. That's what it's about. And we can get really lost in the weeds really easily and really forget that what you do and what you bring to us each time makes me realize how, just how great, you know? We hope that we can continue to really provide a good system here.
Yeah, and, and I just want to, I just got to piggyback on what everybody else has said. It's been really good. And last time I was on school committee, we had a high school participant. And it's been really good to hear from, from Mountain View and just kind of understand a little bit better, like, what things look like from your perspective. Sometimes you'll bring something up, and, and I'll recognize it as something that we've worked on before. And so it's really cool to see, to see it, to see your take on it, too. Sometimes it's, we kind of have all these, these ideas about how people are going to take things. And then when we hear from you, it's like, okay, well, this is kind of how, how the students are understanding it, which is great. I just wanted to know, are you, is there anything that you're really looking forward to about high school?
More like sporting, or like more sports? More like people to meet, because you have classes with different grades?
Yeah.
Taking French.
Ooh. I took French in high school.
What, what is your sport? What sports are you?
In fall, well, my mom signed me up for volleyball in the fall. And then I'll probably do cheer again in the winter.
Nice.
Awesome.
That's really cool. And like, that's really good for us to know, too, because I think we look at like all the, like, we look at like, what are high schoolers looking for? Like, what are people interested in? What do they want to do? And then there's, but there's nothing that replaces like talking to an actual person. So I hope that, that you enjoy ninth grade, and you have a good summer. And thank you so much for doing this.
I hope you have a good summer, too.
Nice.
And this is great, by the way.
Yeah. I've been slowly going through these, because they're so great.
I like the disco ball.
Yes, it's fantastic.
These are great.
I don't know if I have anything else super profound to say. I'm just so glad you're here. Like, you and your classmates are the reason that we sit here and do this. And so it's such a privilege to have you actually come and like hear what's going on. And Ben, in particular, has been a longtime advocate of like, get, in my terms, like, get the students here, we want to hear from you. So like, it's just, it feels like such a privilege to have you here. And my oldest is in the sixth grade, so I'm looking at what looks like a fully formed human. Like, I'm looking at my sixth grade human, and I'm filled with hope. So you're phenomenal. Okay, I want to get those pictures of your.
You're kind of a trailblazer in a way. You're the first from Mountain View to do this.
Yeah.
You're number one here.
All right, I'm going to end by saying, A, it is incredible to see when we, when a community offers a young person an opportunity to see what their capabilities are, because this is, we, we love Mackenzie, but these slides are like blowing us away compared to even all the high school reps that we've had over the years. Just incredible effort and talent, poise and confidence. And I want to let you know personally, Piper, anything you need in the future, reach out to us. References, letters, jobs, internships. Reach out to us. The door is always open.
Put it on that college resume.
This is an adorable picture.
Nope, I wanted to zoom in on, this is Piper.
You on the, on the snow shovel.
Oh, yeah. I was trying to zoom in. That's Piper.
Look at the little hat.
I'm sorry, I can't zoom in. You know how computers go, but.
Thank you for making it. Thank you so much, Piper.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda was a presentation by the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. It turns out that they are going to be available to present, we believe, at the August 13th meeting instead, just to give us an update of what's going on and happenings there. So at this point, we're going to move to public comment. If there is anybody in person or joining us via Google Meet, if you want to raise your hand and share comments, questions, or concerns, we'll give that just 30 seconds to see if anybody hops on. And we've got nothing. So we are going to close public speak and move on to the business update. Good evening, Mr. Burnier.
And good evening, everyone. I'll start with the FY24 Local Appropriation Report. As of the publication of this monthly business report, 93.98% of our local appropriation had either been spent or is encumbered. Non-essential purchasing has been closed for the year. We've started reclassifying some of our special education tuition expenses to Circuit Breaker. Further reclassifications will take place as we get closer to the year-end close. There's still some invoices that need to be paid. Our accounts payable department is in the process of tracking those down, as well as our two final FY24 payrolls. Well, I guess technically three, because folks who take the lump sum option, that's separate. So three payrolls left, and then summer pay encumbrances for the folks that choose to be paid over the summer. And, you know, once all that's done, we can, and the calendar flips over to July 1st, we can do the year-end close. I do project there'll be a deficit at the end of the year. I've been saying that for months. Thanks to the Circuit Breaker extraordinary relief funding, we were able to get our, you know, get our hands on. It will be much lower than I would have thought months ago, but still there. So, you know, there'll, there'll have to be some additional school choice funds, you know, used to cover that. If you wanted to know a number, I would say somewhere probably around $100,000 would be my guess. But, you know, a lot of movement can take place between now and June 30th, even though it's so close. And there's some open POs out there that'll be closed, because they won't all be spent. There'll be some, some staff members likely who have some non-paid days. You know, there's, there's, things, things will move. But if you were wondering for a ballpark figure, that's what I'm going to give you now. I can, you know, at the, the next meeting, give you a, a complete picture. Year-end transfers. I just wanted to let you know that in order to complete the year-end close, many budget transfers will be needed. Basically, I need to zero out all the accounts. And, you know, there's a lot of money that gets moved around. Some of these transfers will be larger than $5,000. So I just wanted to let the committee know this. I mean, typically, that requires a vote from the committee. And I brought that up last year and, you know, essentially asked if you wanted to vote on it. And you said you didn't feel like you needed to. But I still wanted to make you aware that that will be happening once the year ends. Number three, some, some good news. Mountain View recently received notice that it was, it's going to be awarded LEED V4 Gold Certification, for those of you curious as to what that is. LEED certification is an official recognition that a project complies with the requirements prescribed within the LEED rating systems as created and maintained by the U.S. Green Building Council. So it basically means we've built a really energy efficient and, you know, green building. Some of the areas looked at are energy efficiency, sustainability, indoor environment quality, things like that. When the project began, I was told the goal was silver certification, but the, the building surpassed that. Basically, there's like a rating scale. It goes from, I don't know, like one to 100, I believe. And we earned 62 points, which gets you into the gold category. In order to be platinum, we would have needed 80 points. So that, that's quite the feat. I can't imagine there's a lot of buildings that get built that, that meet that. But, you know, the, the goal was surpassed, and I, you know, I think that's something to be proud of. And it certainly highlights both East Hampton's and the building project team's dedication to the city's climate goals. So that was good news. You know, we received the initial report, I think in early May, ran it by the mayor. And she, she asked that I bring it up at a committee meeting, so, so that's good. Next, our summer food service program. As you know, we're continuing it this year for all interested families. The program will be at Mountain View School and run out of Neary School as well. Meals will be available five days a week. They have to be consumed on-site, which will be much better in an air-conditioned cafeteria than in a park. So, you know, we believe there'll be more participation this summer than last summer. Information is currently being distributed to the community. I know Jean posted something on, on the district website and on social media outlets as well. Recently, I just did a purchase order yesterday to run an ad in the Gazette, which will run the last week of June, so that way families are aware. It's going to run from July 1st through August 16th. Breakfast will be from 8:30 to 9:15, and lunch will be from 11:30 to 12:45. I know last year, there was like, you know, various weather concerns and whatnot. I don't see that being an issue this year. I mean, I suppose if we have like, you know, a hurricane, obviously, and, you know, it's not safe to be traveling anywhere, we're not going to run it. But, you know, a light thunderstorm won't shut it down like it would have if it were outdoors. But the program won't run on July 4th, federal holiday.
Two, two questions on that, Nick. The first is, can we make sure that they put up signage at Neary? Because I don't think our community is as, and there's like two big wings to the building, and one is like therapeutic services. So if they could just have signage at Neary, so people will know where to.
Yeah, I can talk to our food service director about that. I really don't see, foresee East Hampton Public Schools families going to Neary to get the meals. It's more for students that are there, but the families are welcome nonetheless. I, I can talk to our food service director about having some kind of signage in terms of where to.
Because if you pull in, you're not going to have, you're going to go to the glass doors, and that's the therapeutic side. The second point would be, I've lost it. Linda, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. How do you know how many to prepare for? I mean, I just, how many meals? I mean, how, how do they kind of figure that out?
Meaning like, how do they, I guess, predict how many they're going to serve?
Yes.
Well, it's hard. And last year was the first year we did this. You know, if you rewind the clock a couple of years to the, you know, the darker days of the pandemic, there was grab and go meals available, you know? And after, you know, that stopped, these summer programs, you know, they needed to be conducted in congregate sites. Like, they weren't, you know, they can't be grab and go unless you're a rural district. So in the summer of '22, we didn't run the program. I think that was, that was like the summer in between the grab and go COVID meals, and then, you know, what we're doing now. And then last year, you know, a couple of people, you know, approached me and said, you know, can we run a summer food service program? You know, there's a lot of families that, you know, participated in the grab and go meals during, during COVID. So, you know, we looked into it and said, sure. You know, I, I met with the folks from Chartwells, and, you know, we did our planning and everything like that. I mean, unfortunately, last year, we weren't a CEP district, so we didn't have any eligible sites other than Neary. And, and you can do like a mile and a half radius. There's actually a USDA map that they like, you know, you can have an outdoor site. So we chose Millside Park, because it was just on the cusp of being a mile and a half away from Neary. And we thought it was kind of a central location, you know, like right on the bike trail. And, you know, we, we thought there'd be more participation. We served, I think, an average of about 17 meals a day last year, which was not that much. We definitely lost money last year. I mean, and I'm not saying that to critique the program. It's, you're, you're almost always going to lose money on a summer food service program. It's fine, we have the money and the revolving, because that's not the point. The point is not to make money. The point is to feed people in the summer that may not have access to food as readily as they do during the school year. I would say that of the average 17 meals we served per day last year, the families were very, very consistent. It was, it was a lot of the same people, very thankful, very appreciative that, you know, the opportunity was there. So I think what kept people out was the outdoor setting, the fact that it, it's not very, I mean, it's not terribly close to where a lot of people live. The weather was, was wacky last summer. It rained a lot. It was very humid, which, you know, that can bring mosquitoes out to a park that's close to water. And, you know, there's just a lot of factors. So this year, we became a CEP district in December, which made our sites eligible. So it was obviously no-brainer to move that to indoors, you know? And Mountain View, we picked, because that's where the larger kitchen is. And, and there's programs there in the summer, too. So like, there'll be kids that are attending programs in the summer at Mountain View that will then eat when the program's done, plus families that, that go to, to get meals. So we're predicting more participation this year. I think our original thought last year was around 40 meals a day. We certainly overestimated that. But I, I would say, based on the amount of kids that'll be in the building, plus families that, that participated last year, I, I think we're going to see an upswing. I think you'll see, I, I think 40 is probably reasonable.
I, I'm asking this because very specifically, in the last two weeks, I had become aware that there were a couple of our students who are concerned about school ending and food. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, how, how that all worked, and so that we can get the word out to them.
Could we develop, and maybe Jean could handle this, could we do a half-sheet flyer with the base it, right? Like, two sites, the time for breakfast, the time for lunch, no service on July 4th, consumed on-site? Can we do something like that to get it in the backpacks by next week?
We can. I mean, it's just the cost of all the copies and everything that comes, you know what I mean? We've been trying to do things electronically.
Like, if we did a half-sheet instead? I just feel like that is something a family could put on their fridge.
Right. Yeah, that's true.
I can, I can talk to our food ser-, well, actually, he probably, I mean, I already have the informational thing that he developed. I mean, it'd just be a matter of shrinking it and, you know, making it where.
Do four on a sheet, honestly.
Yeah, see, see how the data look like, yeah. Get as many as you can on a sheet, but like, I think a half-sheet at least would work.
Yeah. No, I think, I just want to make sure we can even word out.
Get the word out.
Yeah.
And a constant remote, because it's like, I didn't, I forgot breakfast was part of it.
Right.
You know, like, yeah. And the times, and you're not sure, and you're not going to go down. I think if it's right there on the fridge, I think more people would. Anyway, Sam, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just was wondering, so the, several people have asked me about the meals needing to be consumed on-site.
I know.
And so my understanding, that's a USDA.
Right.
Correct.
And is, do you happen to know like the reason behind that at all?
I don't.
I have some guesses, but I'm not going to.
I honestly don't. I, I mean, I, I think it boils down to claiming the meal, you know what I mean? Like, in order, in order for a school to be able to claim a meal for reimbursement, like, a certain amount of a certain variety of different types of foods need to be on a tray in order for that meal to count as reimbursement. So when, when a student goes through a food line on a random day in January, the person, you know, doing essentially the checkout of that meal, like when they swipe the ID or whatever that process looks like, is ensuring that every single thing's on that tray the way it's supposed to be, so that meal can count. If you're doing grab and go, I, I think that process becomes more difficult. You know, because, I mean, we all know that not everybody eats everything on their tray.
Right.
They just have to take it. But, you know, when you got a bag, you know, obviously, you can assemble the bag the way you want to with everything that needs to be in it. But what happens between, you know, that, that bag being handed to someone and that person leaving the property could make the meal unclaimable based on USDA standards. So it really boils down to what's a claimable meal for reimbursement.
Okay.
Why that's different in rural areas, it's probably just because it's harder for folks in rural areas to get to a place that would give a meal. So, you know, they might get three days of grab and go meals.
Right.
Like what happened during the pandemic, you know?
Oh, yeah, and I think, I think during the pandemic, a lot of families, like, that was, for a lot of families, that was kind of their first encounter with that type of program. And like, I remember, you know, I remember one time having a bunch of kids at my house, like, who I was, like, babysitting for the day. And I remember going to one of those sites, and like, I got like six apples, like, it was, and like other food, too. But I came back, and I was like, this is like a lot of food, you know?
Oh, yeah, they would hand out several days' worth, yeah.
It just, it's, I think logistically, it was so much easier to do that grab and go. And I think some, some families had questions about that. But I've just been telling everybody, it's a USDA rule.
It is.
There's got to be a.
Richie Neal's office would love to get some feedback on this, everybody.
The other question I had was, in terms of the, so I think moving it indoors is great. That was like the big piece of feedback I heard last year, was that people didn't like eating outside. But then I heard from one parent, of course, who is concerned about eating inside, because she's immunocompromised and doesn't want to sit inside. I was just wondering, is there outdoor seating? Because I remember at Mountain View, I feel like there is outdoor seating.
There is outdoor seating at Mountain View. I mean, how they're going to organize the, you know, their setup, I, I can't tell you. I mean, I, I don't think it would be against USDA regs if somebody ate on property, like in the, you know, in the back of the cafeteria there in that little outdoor. Like, I, I think that would probably be okay. You know, it's just a matter of, of how they set it up, and, you know, they got to work with custodians and everything.
Yeah.
And also with other programs that are in the building. But, I mean, I, I don't think that would be a problem, just because it's, it's still on-site. Like, I don't think it would be okay if somebody walked all the way up to like where the sign is and sat there and consumed the food. But I also don't know why anybody would do that. So I hope that answered your question.
Okay, cool. I'll, I'll suggest that they get in touch, like, you know.
And I mean, you know, the, the staff there, I believe, is going to be the same folks that were working there last summer.
Yeah.
And they'll be the same people there every day. And, you know, Ken, our, our food service director from Chartwells, you know, he's very responsive and receptive. responsive and receptive. I mean, he'll, you know, he'll let families know what, you know, what they can do and where they can eat and everything like that.
That's great.
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Okay.
I think I was looking at the same, like, thread of questions. And one other idea that was posted there is, or question that was posted, but I thought was a good one, is about like, can adults who are over 18, like, bring their food on site, so that their families can eat together? Are they just sitting?
That's, that's probably a no due to allergies.
Okay.
Like, we got, you got to be able to regulate food that comes onsite in congregate.
So there's, and so if you're over 18, they also can't get a meal?
No, you got to be 18 or under to get a meal.
So it's got to be, I don't know, a situation where they bring their kids and then just hang out while their kids eat, before or eat afterwards?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I mean, I, I think Ken would probably be the best person to answer that. But, you know, there, there are the, you know, the allergy concerns and everything like that, that, you know, creep up and, and, you know, during a regular school day, that's very well regulated, you know, staff, they're, they know who has allergies, you know, sometimes the whole cafeteria is say nut free, sometimes just a section of it is, you know, depending on if an allergy is airborne, or if it's, you know, only if you consume nuts or whatever. And like, you know, the lunch supervisors know, like, the deal. They know who has what, they know what needs to be cleaned. And in the summer, you're looking at a different situation, like, you're not going to have lunch supervisors, you know, you're going to have two food service workers that are distributing meals, and they're not going to be able to manage, you know, what comes in from the outside and, you know, we certainly wouldn't want any allergy issues, so.
Sorry to make you the food service question person.
I haven't known that we're going to have Ken come in next spring.
I wear a lot of hats.
Just a, I was wondering what a CEP district.
That's a good question.
Yeah, community eligibility provision. It's, Maple School used to be a CEP school back in the day. Basically, it means that the number of low-income students has met a threshold where the entire building is considered free and reduced lunch.
One, sorry, one last question. Is it the kind of thing where like, I'm just still harping on this adult eating thing, that, like, meals can be comped for up to 18 and then adults could buy it if they're there? Like, is it that, it's not that kind of thing?
No, it's, no, you can, it's only for 18 and under.
I'm just concerned about the students who are over 18, because I think we might have some.
Great question.
Yeah, I think we have some.
That's another USDA rule.
Well, thank you for answering USDA questions, just to clarify for us.
Sure.
I have a, I have a question about year-end transfers.
Oh.
All right, well, let's get to that personnel report.
Yeah, Sue, personnel report first.
Yeah.
Well, I, I might as well.
Oh, the year-end transfers, yes, I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you meant building transfers. Go ahead.
No, I was just wondering, so, so I only have the vaguest memory of this from last year, and so I'm sure it was no big deal. Do we have to pass something in order to authorize you to, to do that? Like, was there?
We did that.
We did.
Well, last year, when I brought this, you, you'd said you didn't need to.
That we were just going to grant that those, the year-end transfers were fine to not have separate.
Yeah, I mean, I just, the, the reason why I brought it to you last year is, is just because I didn't know if you would want it to require an official vote. In Northampton, it was, they, they did an official vote. So I just wanted to make sure, like, I did everything properly when I came here. But I, last year, you said you were, you were fine as long as I inform you that, you know, that would happen.
Cool.
Personnel?
All right, personnel report. Not much here. You know, we, we hired three substitutes throughout the month of May. You had two separations. We had a custodian at Mountain View, as well as our data coordinator for the district here that deals with, you know, our absentee management system, as well as a lot of state reporting. No transfers this month, or last month. Current vacancies, and I, you know, I put in italics there, this does not include vacancies, like, for folks that are resigning as of like June 30th, or people retiring or anything like that, you know, that those will appear on a future report. And some of them may be filled very quickly. Some of them may be filled before the school year ends, you know, depending. So, you know, still that, that librarian's been vacant all year. Hopefully, it will be filled over the summer. We have a par educator at Mountain View, still need one lunch supervisor. I haven't heard of any other ones leaving, but sometimes in the summer, they leave as well, and they might need more than one. We need a night custodian at Mountain View, although I do believe hiring paperwork has been submitted for that, so I think that'll be filled quickly. Network technician for the district, and then the, the data coordinator is vacant. I left that off of the list, but that is, it's still vacant, so. There's my personnel report for May.
Thank you so much, Nick.
Thank you.
Superintendent Beninda.
So we had a wonderful graduation last Friday. Everyone that spoke had really nice speeches, all giving really good information, hopeful conversation to the graduates about what they're, what they, what they learned from where they are and what, what we all wish they will have to be successful in their future. Tomorrow is Step Up Day, as Piper said, so that's when the eighth graders go to the high school and they get to visit the classes and go through the hallways, sit in the cafeteria. We do have Field Day coming at Mountain View next Monday, and last week, all the classes got to go outside and make tie dye shirts. So every class will have their own tie dye shirts.
Very quickly, parents, find that plastic bag if you haven't dealt with it already.
Yes.
Rinse it out and put it through the wash by itself.
Were we supposed to get them already?
Some did, some didn't. They should have come home.
I will follow up.
Some teachers decided to keep them and wash them for their students and sent them home in plastic bags, and you're supposed to wash it in cold water.
Okay.
Separately.
Separately.
And then let it dry.
Oh, I, I know about tie dye.
You're an expert. Actually, I used to be a camp counselor, so I was enjoying the tie dye work out there, trying to teach them how to do the bullseye with the different paints, so it was fun. We start finals next week at the high school. Students only have to go for when they have that final. Bus only does still come at 2:00. So if you only have a final and you're done early, you can stay in the library, or you can call somebody for a ride home. But if you don't have anyone to call, you can stay, and at 2:00, the bus will come. Still want to remind people that there is no school on 6:19. There is no school, so there's no work that day. However, the last day of school is 6:20, and.
Half day. It's a half day, everybody.
Yes. So that, we'll be sending a memo home to everybody, wishing everybody a really nice summer. The commissioner did come out with a brochure today, talking about safety in the summer, like, you know, not to go in area where you can get ticks, about not going into lakes and pools unless you have somebody there with you. So we'll be sending that home to all parents, too, because we want everyone to have a wonderful summer, but a safe summer.
Sounds great. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it. Great. Next is school committee discussion, policy subcommittee. I think we have a little bit more than update, do we?
Yeah, well, so I have, we have some policies to do the first readings of, and I have like a PowerPoint of them.
Okay.
But I also want to be aware that we are, we are doing executive session later tonight.
Yeah.
And so I don't know how much time we want to devote to that.
How long do you think it will take?
I was going to give it, you know, like, I, I wouldn't want to go over an hour. I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, an hour?
Well.
Oh, yeah.
Did you read my email?
Yeah, I did. I didn't get the hour part.
No, I could, I could do like half an hour. I mean, we could just go through a few of them. A lot of them are really minor updates.
Okay.
But I do want to just make sure that.
Why don't we do this? Let's see, it is 6:45 now, let's see where we're at at 7:00.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to do, like, do you want to do the rest of this before 7:00 and then come back to?
Let's wrap up the, we'll wrap up school committee discussion and action items and swing back to the first readings.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so do we have a finance subcommittee update?
The finance subcommittee has not met. Okay, and we do not have it skipped because we are working on, because we are in the throes of contract negotiations, and there's plenty of work to do there.
Correct. CES, Sam?
I do have a CES update. So, so CES stands for the Collaborative for Educational Services, and it is the, the collaborative that we are a member of. And so we have, so my position is to be a member of their board with the other 30-something school committees that pay into the, into CES. So the last meeting that we had was last week. There is, so we're talking a lot in education right now in the state, just about kind of the budget, the, the, kind of.
Challenges?
Not ideal budget situation that a lot of districts are, well, I don't want to be too, because we're actually doing okay in East Hampton. I don't want to like make anybody panic, but like, I think it's been pretty hard to avoid news about kind of the end of the ESSR funds, the fact that everything costs more than it used to. You know, this has been kind of a, a tough time for a lot of districts, and for that reason, it's also kind of a tough time for CES, too. It was, the, the deficit is higher than they expected it to be at the end of this year. One of the things that school districts have really caught down on is, cut down on is professional development, which of course is like one of the main ways that CES makes money. They have a lot of state contracts, but they don't actually make any money off of those contracts. And then we were also looking, when we were looking at some of the financials, some of the point of the collaboratives are for small, for school districts that can't provide all those services in district, we're supposed to have an affordable option to be providing special services, like, well, still within our district, but in partnering with other districts. And now, the cost of those services have got, has gone up so much that CES can't actually offer them in a way that is financially feasible. So we had a little bit of a discussion. I don't know a whole lot about, like, collaborative law, although I've got a feeling I'm going to know more about it soon, because I've been diving in a little bit. But, so I just think it's interesting that, you know, we're, we're finding the same budget challenges there. And a lot of the first places where school districts are cutting, to try to avoid cutting teachers and staff and other, are things that they get from the collaboratives, such as, you know, professional development, which is a relatively easy one. You can't cut special education services necessarily, but you can cut back on professional development. So that, so that was an interesting conversation. I hadn't really seen it from that perspective before. And then we also did vote to renew the Todd Gazda, the executive director, his contract for next year, or for the next three years. And so, yeah, that was kind of the, the overview. So I'll be interested to see kind of how that turns out.
Great.
And we did have those two graduations, too.
We did. The Mount Tom and Heck, they were both wonderful. Megan, do you want to speak to that very briefly?
They were lovely. We, they had great speeches, the students were amazing, we got to hear about their accomplishments. Thank you for extending the invite to us so we could go.
Yeah, I wish I could have gone.
To get a good picture.
Super cool.
Which proved nearly impossible to get a picture of them, because they were joyful and moving, and I wasn't there.
And our Mount Tom student also walked with the full class at the graduation on Friday.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep.
It's awesome.
The next we have is the superintendent evaluation. We are still waiting on a couple members, including the mayor, to submit those evaluations. Then they have to be compiled and presented, so that we should have ready to present to the public at our August 13 meeting. And the superintendent search update, we have hired a consultant from MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Our field director, Liz LaFond, is going to be working with us. We have had our initial meeting, which was incredibly productive, and we have a next meeting set with Liz. These meetings with Liz are public meetings. We style them as a work session, so we do meet in the back room. So they are not filmed, but they are open to the public, so that we can make use of a conference table, because it's a lot of brainstorming, collaborative work on timelines and phrasing and whatnot. So that next meeting will be Tuesday, July 23. I'd be lying if I said I remembered what time we were going to start. It's either 5:00 or 6:00, but it will be on the website. Action items, Megan, do you want to?
Yep, I was just going to look. I think we said 6:00. Oh, no, we said.
Thought it was a 5:00 PM start time with the Liz meetings.
We sure did.
Yeah, so that's going to be 5:00 PM, Tuesday, July 23. In this rear conference room is our next meeting, specific to forming the superintendent search committee and also finalizing promotional materials and the job posting.
Perfect. A short list of action items, to save time for Sam. I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of 5:21, 2024, with the stipulation to withhold until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chairperson.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
And a motion to approve the work session meeting of June 3, 2024, the minutes from the work session meeting of June 3, 2024.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
I got it.
I had to call one, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, so we're going to circle back to some first readings.
Alrighty, so, I'm going to.
We are starting, is this with the ACA nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, or do you want to cherry pick some? How do you want to?
Well, I'm just going to go through, I think it's easiest, because we're going to get through them all anyway.
Are you able to share this slideshow?
That's exactly what I'm about to try to do.
Excellent.
I just, I'm going to say the thing everybody always says when they're about to share things, which I don't usually share on Google Meet, but. To avoid an infinity mirror. Okay, but you don't see an infinity mirror. Perfect. Okay. Actually, this is easier than I thought it was going to be. Is that popping up? Well. Um, let me just try this one more time. I'm trying to present it, and it might not let me do that. All right, I'm just going to, I'm, it's not going to look as good as I want it to. I'm just going to do it this way. All right, so I put together a little slideshow. So the first, so essentially, and again, just to back up, so that everybody knows what, what we're doing here. So the, so MASC put out a, like, huge polit, like, series of policy updates a few years ago, which the last policy subcommittee was able to get through, I think, the really important ones, that were like the most important to the running of the district. But there was a whole bunch of stuff that just hadn't been updated yet. So we went through the policy subcommittee, we had a meeting that I was calling Policy Palooza, where we sat and we just went through them all, or most of them, anyway. So what I did was, I sent out the policy, the, some of them are just revised, this one is ACA, and you'll see it says revised here. And it just meant that there was like one little thing added, or there wasn't like a huge change. So I'm, so I'm going to say I, how do, how do I word this again? I, I move to.
Move to approve the first reading of policy X.
Okay, I move to approve the first reading of ACA nondiscrimination on the basis of sex.
Second. Thank you, Linda.
So this one, oh, sorry.
Do you want a discussion now?
Discussion now.
Excellent, now I'm all caught up? Go.
Now we've got it, now we've got a method, okay. So this policy, just a basic policy that says, the school district will not discriminate on the basis of sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity in the educational programs and activities of the public school. And then another important point to note, note with this one, is that it applies to both students and employees. And the only difference, this is already on the books for us, the only difference was that there was a hyperlink that was added to the U.S. Department of Education.
Okay.
So are we good with adding that hyperlink?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, do we need to vote, so, since it's.
This is a first reading also, everybody.
So we don't need to vote, we just.
We just. Just vote in the first read, right?
You vote, you vote for both readings, but the point is it isn't adopted after a first reading. It requires a second reading to be adopted. So we have the motion on floor. This is discussion. Are we ready to vote or are there any other questions?
Ready.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Right. So this next one is a, this merged two prior policies into one. This is the two prior policies that were urged, merged, were called BBBA/BBBB. And so I move to bring for a first reading BBBA/BBBB, school committee member qualification slash oath of office.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any further discussion or questions?
All right, do you want me to explain?
No.
Differences at all? Okay. The only thing that I added to this was I, I just added the word affirm next to the word swear, so it's a swear or affirm.
Perfect.
All right, so the next one?
We gotta vote on it now.
We gotta vote, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes?
Guys are the best. All right. So I move to bring for a first reading BBB, BBAA, school member, school committee member authority.
There it is.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Because we have two policies, BBBB and BBBA.
So we have to rename the first one?
No, you should be deleting the current one that we have.
Ah, is that a separate motion, Sue?
Separate. Each one should be separate. It should be a motion to delete.
Okay, we do that at the first reading or do we do that at the second reading?
It's just in the added, you need to make the first reading to delete BBBB and BBBA in order to be replaced by BBBA/BBBB.
Okay.
You have current policies.
All right, thank you, Sue. Motion to delete.
The current?
The current policies, BBBA and BBBB.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. Questions or discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue, I appreciate it.
I would have assumed that was like a second reading thing.
Yeah.
Good, good call. All right.
In the thought of it all.
It's all this, this next one, which I, okay, so I'm gonna motion for the first reading for BBAA, school committee member authority.
Second. And we have a second. Thank you, Linda.
So this was just some minor language changes, which you can see up here, replacing programs of the town's public schools with programs of the district, updating some gendered pronouns, neglect his share of the work becomes their share of the work, the good of the town becomes the good of all students, and remember that they are one of a team. And basically, this just describes the authority and duties of school committee members.
Any further question or discussions?
I just want to say if anybody is watching this, take a look at this policy. It's really good to know what school committee members do, and it's all kind of laid out here.
And don't do.
Yes.
Yeah. Excellent point.
That's a great point. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That was Sam's motion, Ben's second. And Wendy's. And this was for the BBBA, school committee member authority.
Update?
BBAA, yes.
Yeah, this was a.
First read of an update.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion passes.
So this is, so this is a new policy, or sorry, I motion to discuss for a first reading BDFA, school councils.
Motion to approve first reading of BDFA, school councils? Correct? Is that correct, Sam?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the first reading of a new policy, BDFA.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Linda is the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So this is, this is a, obviously, we've had school councils for a while. This is a new written policy that MASC put out for all school districts. So this just clarifies the purpose and overview of the school council. So essentially, the principal has the primary responsibility for the management of the school, and the school council advises the principal in specific areas of school operation. The principal is the co-chair of the school council and also has the responsibility to define the composition and forming of the group. The school council should meet at least once monthly during the school year and outside of school hours. They use consensus to resolve issues and formulate recommendations. They use open meeting law and Robert's Rules of Orders.
Consensus, huh?
Yeah. They do not qualify for executive session. Superintendent receives minutes and agendas and provides those to the school committee upon request. And the purpose of the school council is to adopt educational goals for the school that are consistent with state and local policies and standards, to identify the educational needs of the students attending the school, to review the school building budget, and to formulate a school improvement plan that may be implemented only after review and approval by the superintendent. And there is another policy about that school improvement plan. We weren't quite ready to bring it up.
Also, in our district, our current policy is that that school improvement plan is approved by the school committee?
Yes, that.
Not the super, not just the superintendent.
The formulation of a school improvement plan can only, okay, hold on.
I'm saying if we adopt this policy, Sam, that mean, and I'm not saying I believe one way or the other, I'm saying currently, the school committee approves the school improvement plans. If we adopt this policy, that authority will be transferred to the superintendent.
I don't know, do we have, I don't, didn't see that in a policy that we have.
I don't know that it's a policy. It's a, it's a.
It just kind of how it's done, huh?
Can we put in there the?
I don't know, I'm just bringing.
Well, no, that's a good question. Let's, let's table this then, because I want to look more into that.
This is a fantastic new policy to put in here. I think this is going to address.
Real timely.
So much stuff, so let's.
So, but I do want to look into that, and actually, this might make the most sense, and I wondered about separating these two, because this might make the most sense to bring up with the policy about the school improvement plan. And we had actually like discussed that, and I talked with the principals about it as well, and we came up with a couple of like East Hampton specific changes to the, to the template that MASC sent out. So I think what I'll do is table this for now, and then we'll just.
So we need.
Do it next time.
I need a motion.
Do we need a motion or can I just table?
You need a motion to table.
Okay. Motion to table the BDFA, school council's first reading.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Megan.
But also a question about it.
Yes.
Our July meeting is a work session now? Is that correct?
Correct. So we've converted what, the July 23rd was meant to be a regular session, we've converted that to a work session with Liz LaFond for the superintendent search. We also have a tentative on the books, July 9 work session with, we don't have a tight agenda for that, and I have basically until like the beginning of next week to pin that down and post it.
Are we able in a work session to do this? Or do we need to wait? Okay, great. I would love to see if it's possible for the.
Oh, yeah. Actually, if we.
Want to make that school council SIP focused?
Yes, that's a great idea.
Yes, that would be great, actually, because then we could finish.
Okay.
And that, and honestly, that was kind of one of the things I wanted to, before moving too far with these, I wanted to run that by you guys, so.
So for members, that'll be Thursday, July 9, 6 to 8 PM, rear conference room.
And weirdly, you can all see me making notes on my PowerPoint.
Okay. So we need a vote on tabling the BDFA, school council. We have, unless there's any.
I motion that.
Yep, and we just need to vote on. Any other questions or comments before we vote? We're gonna vote to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So Sam, were you saying you also want to table the school committee? Were you saying the next one too?
No, I didn't, I didn't actually put the other one in because I wasn't quite ready with it yet, so. All right, so this one is, this is a new policy, but again, this describes something that we're already doing. Oh, sorry, I'll motion to do the first reading for BG, school committee policy development.
Okay. Motion to approve first reading for BG, school committee policy development. Heard, do we have a second?
I hope to say new policy, right?
We could.
So it's a new.
We can say new.
So it's a motion to.
Approve the first read of the new policy, BG, school committee policy development.
Right. Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Ben, Ben got it.
Ben? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sam?
So this is basically just describing how the school committee creates policies. So essentially, we will develop policies and put it into writing. Policies are guides for the discretionary action for, of those whom it delegates authority. So basically, we come up with a policy, and that is to guide the action of, of the people to whom it applies. So we can pass really broad policies, but we can also pass really specific policies, which is essentially what we're doing. They are supposed to be lawful, they're supposed to be interpreted in terms of state law. They're not, and, and state regulations from the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And this is basically just saying, where do our policies come from? They come from state law, they come from regulation. Or they come from, it doesn't say anything about the community in this one, but.
Or they at least comply with all of those.
Comply with those, yeah. And then, and then, but we don't actually, we don't actually administer the policies. So we're not out there like, you know, hiring and firing people and putting people on, you know, doing discipline or do, you know what I mean? Like.
You do it through the study and evaluation of reports concerning the execution of the policies.
Exactly. So there is, it's, it is another, and this is, you know, another, it's kind of a level of separation between us and the running of the school district.
Upper management.
Huh?
Upper management.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions, discussions?
I enjoy the note at the bottom of it. It makes me feel very like.
Yes.
Confused about what's happening.
Get a policy to make policies. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes?
All right.
This is another new policy?
It is possible to overthink these a little bit, too. Trust me, I have.
Let's, let's give this 10 more minutes and see what we can get through.
Yeah, 10 more minutes. We're doing good. We're doing good. All right. So I motion for a first reading of BGC, policy revision and review.
New policy. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All right, go ahead, Sam.
So this basically just says that we'll review policies on a regular basis. We will, some of the questions that we will ask include how have policies been implemented? We are going to solicit feedback from stakeholders as appropriate. And then the superintendent is to tell us if a policy is out of date or needs revision. I thought that was interesting because I've always assumed that it was actually the policy chair's job to do that, and evidently, the superintendent, according to what MASC suggests, is supposed to be doing that, so.
Does that, does that comply with your understanding of how to best run that?
No, I always felt it was the chair's.
Yeah, I don't like that.
That's what I want, that's what I'm wondering, yeah.
I would prefer to just strike that.
Okay, yeah.
What does everybody think? We're talking about the final line that is saying.
What if we say the superintendent or the.
I would just leave it out.
Can bring up policies that are out of date or need revision?
I do like the idea that it's somebody's response, like that somebody should be paying attention to what, and so what I see it as too is like if we have a policy, for example, our school lunch policy, which is current, well, actually, no, our current school lunch policy is good, but if, if we still had our old school lunch policy on the books from before COVID, you know, it would make sense for, if the superintendent is, is looking through, you know, procedures in the district, to say, hey, did you know our school lunch policy is really out of date? But I don't necessarily think the superintendent should be responsible.
No, I don't either.
I think that, for me, that's the problem.
If, can you add to the next to last sentence, it will consider feedback from school staff, students, and community when revising policies as appropriate, and will screen for policies that are out of date or for other reason appear to need revision?
Um.
Because that's talking about the duties of the committee.
Okay. So.
So basically, you're just saying, and, as appropriate, period.
Okay.
And, or, comma, send me the one.
Thank you.
And will screen for the rest of this. Policies.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
So it's the committee's responsibility.
Right.
Yeah.
And I mean, you could certainly, if you were to hire.
No, I like that. And I don't think we need to go, I don't think we need to get like an attorney's take on that. I think that that is pretty good.
No.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that's great.
So Sue, if we make a revision to a first reading, does, do we need any further action? Do we have to take another vote?
Do we need a different motion to approve the first reading with the revision?
You should add it into the, the motion to approve with.
So we have a motion on the table, we're discussing now for this. So in the course of discussion, we've arrived at a revision.
So you probably want to approve the motion that you have on.
Yep, so we need to read, okay, so go ahead.
So, so am I.
Retract, retract your motion.
Retracting the motion to do the first reading for BGC.
Okay, pause, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes? Go ahead.
Okay, so now I'm gonna motion to do a first reading of the policy, BGC, with the.
With the revision I suggested?
With the revision suggested by the chair.
Uh, second?
A second.
Thank you, Ben. Are you, are you running out of seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
It does make it easier, they, this came up at CES the other night, it does make it easier when the same person seconds every time.
Sue, I can get you that text, or we'll, we'll get you that text.
We'll get you the text.
To revise that. Okay.
Cool.
So that one's done. All right, we are at, we are at 7:09, so let's.
What do you think, you want to keep going?
Let's do this one, let's do this, let's do this next, I mean, is there?
No.
My lord, they just keep coming. I mean, I know.
There's so many, Laura, there's so many.
I know, and we're gonna have to do it eventually.
I know.
Just keep going. Just keep going.
So this one, this one is BGD, school committee, oh, I, I move for, to do the first reading for BGD, school committee, review of procedures, which is a new policy to be added to our handbook.
Perfectly done, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. Go ahead, Sam.
So essentially, this builds on what we were just talking about. So based on the policies that the school committee passes, the superintendent and administration develop procedures based on those policies. The committee can review procedures, but can only revise or veto procedures when school committee feels they are not consistent with written policy. We don't officially approve procedures except as required by state law or in cases with strong community attitudes or possible student or staff reaction make it necessary or advisable for a procedure to have committees' advanced approval. And then the superintendent publishes rules and regulations regarding student and teacher conduct, and this is published in the student handbooks, which are approved by the school committee every year. So this, I think, is actually something that would have been really helpful for us to have in writing at earlier times, so it does, I, I do worry, my only concern was that second paragraph seems awfully kind of.
May review the procedures. Interpretable. The superintendent for the school district, whenever they appear inconsistent.
All right, or no, not that one, the, the next one, the possible student or staff reaction, strong community attitudes. I had a little bit of concern about that, but then I can also see that as being a really good.
I think it's trying to say, this is not something that's a common occurrence, there, here's some circumstances under which they may choose to do this, where they're stepping out of just policy and, and walking into procedure.
Yeah.
I think it's giving that opening in the rare cases that, that could, something could happen.
Yeah.
Which I can't think of a single one in my tenure on here, but who knows?
Right.
Knock on wood.
And we were, obviously, apparently, when we were talking about this, we talked a lot about snow days. I don't actually remember what we discussed. I really wish I'd taken better notes on here, because that would've been a good example. But, but yeah, I think this is, this, again, this is like what we already do. It's really, it's really nice to have it in writing, and I actually think this is pretty, as far as legalese goes, this is more accessible writing than I expected, so...
If you want me to refresh your memory, we discussed that the superintendent determines when we have snow days.
Right.
That is procedure.
Right.
And it's not about...
Oh, okay.